You ready, Sheriff?
Okay, the Brazos County Commissioners will meet in a workshop June 26th. It's about 10:12. Commissioners' courtroom, 200 South Tech Avenue, Suite 106. First item is a call to order. The second is consider and discuss matters pertaining to projects and funds designated as placeholders through the American Rescue Plan Act 2021. Topical discussion will include current projected products, status of projects, amounts of funding for each project designated as a placeholder, and next steps moving forward with selected projects. Who wants to lead it? Ah, Melinda, come on.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. First of all, since it's been a while since we've been here, I want to air induce myself, plus there's a few new faces. My name is Melinda Smith. I am the Executive Vice President of Trail Learn Associates, and I'm happy to see y'all today. It's been probably a year or so since we last chatted about where we're at, where we're going with these ARPA funds. So I want to make sure and start with a little bit of just a brief history of how we got to today. The first allocation that the county received was just over $22 million in 2021. They then received a second allocation equal to the first, just over $22 million, in 2022 for a total ARPA allocation of $44,521,550. So those are the funds that we are dealing with as we move forward in our discussion. So identified projects. What does that mean? Some of you would have been here, some of you are new to the discussion, but we did sit down with the Commissioners and discuss what was eligible under the ARPA program, what was eligible under both the ARPA program and state laws, there are differences in the TIO, and decided what some of the priorities for the county were, what fit into the program, what checked all the boxes, what we could look at taking a deeper dive into and get more information in how to spend these funds. Mostly want to make sure that we're meeting community needs in spending these funds and also meeting the requirements. I'm not going to get into all of those requirements. I think we're up to probably 600 pages of documents and guidance to sift through, but if there are any questions as I move forward, make sure and let me know, and I'll do my best to answer those. So the programs so far identified some projects and contracts that are both necessary and desirable to move forward with. One of those is our contract for program administration. The amount that is a not-to-exceed value is 1.8 million. So far, $132,000 has been expended of that cost. The vaccination hub expenses have been completed and expensed. That's just over $160,000. Broadband study, an initiative. As demonstrated by the presentation earlier, the county did initiate a broadband study. The actual cost of the study was $69,600. The identified amount previously was $1 million. So we do have around $930,000 remaining for the court to decide whether those funds should be continuing to target broadband initiatives or moved to another project. The BISD Building Feasibility Study is underway. It is nearly complete. They are doing some revisions to the first floor plan. The identified amount, when we estimated costs, were around $150,000. The actual cost is $72,168. Elder care, "Are You Okay?" So this one has two different names. We've been consistently calling it, referring it to both, but technically "Are You Okay?" is what the county, if you choose to do so, will be moving forward with. The county staff has visited with several other communities and evaluated what services they offer, determined what best fits the needs here in Brazos County, and "Are You Okay?" was found to be the best fit. There is a volunteer coordinator position that will be necessary to assist with that program that I believe expired last week.
Friday.
Friday. The posting for the job position expired and hope to have someone hired to get that program underway by the end of the summer. Now, in learning more about this, it was realized that an additional $37,000 beyond the original $50,000 anticipated cost will be necessary to ensure funding is available to continue the program through the end of fiscal year 2025. Scotty's House. The court did sign a beneficiary agreement with Scotty's House in the amount of $26,000. The original $25,000 was the cost that was submitted with the proposal, and then quotes were received, and there was a $1,000 difference. At the time of the approval of the beneficiary agreement, the court did approve that $1,000 increase. The invoices and processes to secure those funds by Scotty's House haven't been completed yet. They are underway and doing their business, but we just haven't on our end received everything to actually write that check. They have been obligated, those funds, but not actually expended yet. Y'all, let me know if I'm moving through too fast or if there's any questions. I'm just trying to make sure I cover everything, sorry. The Medical Examiner's Office. This was, of course, the largest project that was considered, and the price tag at the time of the feasibility study was around $24 million. We'll, of course, have firmer numbers as we continue to move forward. Negotiations are currently underway with an architectural firm to do the design of the building. This is one that we want to make sure that everyone is very much aware, incognizant of the fact that this timeline is very tight for completing this building. We're going to have to make sure that we stay on top of everybody, including us, y'all, everyone. Going to have to stay on top of everybody to make sure that this building is completed by that 12/31/26 deadline. Now, it is still possible. We are still on track to do that, but it is going to be adhering to a schedule that would move fairly quickly. Once we get the design firm contract implemented, then we would, of course, be pushing to move as quickly as we can. The idea would be to allow as much time for construction as possible. We all know post-COVID, how many delays can be experienced in supply chains, so we want to make sure that we're allowing enough time to accommodate any backlogs or backorders of materials or equipment that's necessary. Of course, again, we'll have a better idea of the actual cost once we get that design process underway. Next, we have the air purification for the jail. So this is one that took a lot of research in trying to figure out exactly what was going to be the best option for the county. The staff did their due diligence, and the preference is portable units. They have a little bit increased flexibility of use, are deemed to be more cost-effective, and are easier to transport. Again, another one we need to keep a close eye on and probably get out the door quickly is going to be due to the lead time running out, between 18 and 24 months. So another one that needs to be obligated and out the door for bids as soon as possible. And then Friends for Life. This was a request for funding that was received from a nonprofit organization. The information that we did receive from Friends for Life indicates that it provides assistance to currently 16 Brazos County residents. The purpose of the NPO is to assist with guardianship and money management programs for disabled and elderly residents. So while they do serve 16 Brazos County residents, they are predominantly in McClennan County. They're actually a very large organization. They serve around 50 counties total, but the largest number of those served are in McClennan County. And then the Area Agency on Aging Housing Assistance Programs. So this was a project that was identified as a way to meet community needs in housing. Rather than the county stand up its own program, which had a ton of rules that would have required additional staff, basically the money wouldn't have necessarily been going directly to the community when we talked about this a couple years ago now, probably. It was determined that perhaps the best way to facilitate any kind of home remodeling, rehabilitation, accessibility needs would be to seek a program that was already in existence. So this was the solution. Check with the area agency. They did have some programs, and currently do you have some? Now, what we found, once we started discussing options with them, is that they had very few unmet needs currently. They do have a list of homes and people that they're assisting, but mostly they have the funding through sources like ARPA and other means to take care of those existing needs. So this is one that we would actually recommend, that this funding possibly be reallocated to another project. BISD Building Renovations. So during the last discussion in Commissioners' Court regarding this, this kind of became the catch-all for the balance of funds. So that's why we have the very random, but still fairly accurate number. It was very close to the amount that had been estimated for the renovations of the BISD building. But again, it also kind of became the catch-all. So we have a $9,367,741 price tag on this one. We're currently not thinking there's much change that. We're thinking that's still fairly accurate, but we will not know for sure until the feasibility study is completed, which we should have soon, and it'll be a more accurate reflection of these anticipated costs. And then the Brazos County Sanctuary and Feasibility Study, combined with the North Wing Feasibility Study and Renovations, is the final project that we'll discuss. And the court has actually approved, including these projects, in new county debt. So these funds will be reallocated, hopefully, to another project. The identified amount was 1.7 million. The debt issued on this was $60,360. That was the cost of the study. So what does that mean? That means that the total ARPA allocation of $44 million, still the same number we started with. The total projects and contracts that were identified initially totaled $38,322,549.84, including any changes previously made by the court. And then considering the proposed changes that were discussed today, that would bring us to $37,101,317.84, which means that there is around $7 million to reallocate or repurpose, however the court may choose. And if you'll switch to the other spreadsheet, it'll give you a little bit better idea of just where those funds come and go, and things that have already been approved versus what we're discussing today. And I believe you'll have that in your packets as well. Can you slide it over to the left this little bit? Oh, on the bottom scroll bar. If they ask where they move it every time you go from one program to another. We may have it blown up a little bit too much. There we go. That's perfect. So obviously, today is a workshop, and there's no action to be taken, but things to consider will be, where do we move these funds? You know, which existing projects do we anticipate could be more costly? We don't know for sure all of those numbers yet. It may be something that you wish to wait and see what those numbers come in and decide later. It may be that you have ideas already on what you would like to do with that. The main reason for today's meeting, though, is to get you thinking about what do we do with this $7 million that we have freed up, either by projects falling off the radar or coming in under budget? Now, this number does also include the $930,400 that is dedicated to broadband currently, solely for the purpose that even if it does stay within that broadband category, we still are going to need to know what we're doing with it, so.
Okay. I mean, I think broadband, just to touch on it, since we just had that discussion, it sounds like we could potentially, I don't know what, we have to go through, back through our P process, or whether we could use the group that was here this morning that we've already done, but it sounded like there's some things we may need to do. It would cost some more money for them to do studies about how to actually go after some of those grants and try to convince the state that the maps that they provided to us that show that we're inadequate, that those are all, I'd hate to take it out there. I think we need to leave some money in there so that we can use that to try to move forward with broadband. I don't know how much, but maybe we just leave it like this and find how much it's going to take to do that before we actually shift money out of there.
Yeah, that was one of the categories that was a no questions asked category. So I think, keeping it there, I think if we need to accelerate, what I talked about earlier is how we get to the next step, what's our program going to be if we can use that money the same way we used for the study and accelerate that, I'm all for that.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I haven't, I'm not familiar enough with the grants to where I know how much of it is matching money that can be public-private partnership.
Well, I think the rules are being farmed, much like ARPA. The rules are being farmed as we speak, so I don't know that anybody knows yet.
What was that analogy, flying the plane while we're building it?
Yeah.
Okay. But yeah, I agree.
So let's keep our parachutes ready.
Yeah. Well, I mean, in overall, the views is short on this one. The things committed and spent, so, you know, I'm glad we got the money. There was one question I did have. Apparently, when you do the revenue loss calculations, there's been some people who've interpreted that to mean that it goes completely away from all of the requirements of this, but I'm pretty sure that we're still required to allocate it by the end of '24. We're still required to have it all spent by the end of '26. We're still required to, we cannot pay off debt with it, and we cannot make a pension contribution, even if it does fall into the lost revenue. So all those other rules still apply?
Yes and no. Okay, so when you claim revenue loss, you do still have to show what that back-end use is. So it has to go somewhere. You can't just say, okay, we're claiming revenue loss and stop there. And that is, that is actually a misconception. I have been places where people think that, oh, we said it's revenue loss and we're done. That is not true. It does reduce some of the reporting requirements. Mostly, you're proving that you did not use those funds in one of the ways that is disallowed. As you said, pension payments, paying off debt, litigation, paying off any kind of settlement costs, things of that nature are not allowed. And so your back-end use, you're proving you did not use the funds for that purpose. Now, there are some types of projects that aren't eligible under, and I think we talked about this before with being above the line and below the line was kind of how we phrased it. There are types of projects that aren't eligible under the four ARPA eligibility categories, but they do fall into the government services provisions. So you can reimburse the county for payroll is one of the options under revenue loss, which then does... I'm not an accountant or an auditor, and so some of the words that come out, hopefully, are Katie approved. I know, right? I'm a little scared, that's why I'm hesitant. No, but for instance, if you do elect to reimburse the county for payroll expenses, if you do so for a previous year, you can't reimburse a line item that's already closed out. So it's a very strange world you enter into of you're still reimbursing the county for payroll expenses for, say, fiscal year '21.
But it's not...
But it's not there anymore, so then it goes into the general fund.
So it's not accrual, it's a cash basis? Is the best way to understand that, right?
I'm not sure I understand about the unclosed line. You mean the closed budget?
Well, the closed budget, yes.
Fiscal year or closed?
See, I told you I'm not going to use Katie-approved language.
And this is, we're still figuring some of this out. I just got the message this morning that we can't use, we can't claim some of our payroll expenses on grant at all, right?
Correct.
But on revenue replacement?
Well, you could, law enforcement and some things.
No premium pay.
Correct, no premium pay. That's a different animal entirely.
Yes, and we come up with like $7 million worth of expenditures during that time period, April of 2020 to September of 2020. But you're saying we can't go back and claim it as revenue, like use of revenue replacement?
No, we can. I'm just saying that because your fiscal year budget is already closed for that fiscal year, you can't just dump it back into there because it no longer...
You can't just dump it into expense? I mean, what happens?
That's what I'm saying, you can't. So it becomes funding, it doesn't have to, in other words, go to a payroll expense, even though you're reimbursing, it could go into your general fund now.
General fund revenues?
Gotcha.
I think, I think what she's saying is that we can, well, what was Feds, I won't blame you.
Yes, thank you.
What the Feds are saying is that you can use the payroll expenses that we incurred at that time to justify how you used the revenue loss, but you don't have to budget it and use it in future payrolls.
Thank you.
It could just go, it would become...
Gotcha.
...funded. Fund balance, yes.
So we can true up as to what the source of the funds were. We cannot true up based on anything other than our current needs.
Right.
Okay. All right, so, and do we have the final calculation on what was lost revenue and what was, what of the total 44.5 million?
Just had, we didn't wait this long. It looks like we will not be able to claim any revenue replacement, revenue loss for, now remember, revenue loss is calculated on calendar year.
Right.
Not fiscal year.
Right.
So we won't be able to claim any for FY '23, calendar year '23, because we can't, our tax rate can't have gone below what it was established at in 2019.
That was, that's a new clarification by the Treasury very recently.
I love all the twists and turns. I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm glad that we have $44.5 million to use to benefit citizens of Brazos County. It's just, compliance is a big issue, making sure, I mean, because I, what we, what none of us want to have happen is, is for, we get through with this and we think we're good, and all of a sudden, US Treasury comes back and says, hey, no, wait a minute.
And it must have been a possibility with the debt ceiling discussion, because I got several notices saying, we're not going to call it back yet. We're not going to call it back yet.
Okay, so now that 22,164,837, that was the amount that is the calculation of revenue loss?
Yes.
Okay, so half of it?
Basically, yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's, because there's rules to everything, but there's different rules to apply to revenue loss money than there are that apply to what's remaining.
Correct.
And they just came out also that we could apply a revenue loss to both debt, not pension, both debt.
Really?
Really.
Okay, so have we, do we have a accounting of, I mean, you've got to look at this two separate ways, I think, in my book. Do we have an accounting of what of that money we've identified as revenue loss that we've used?
Yes.
Okay.
And mostly Scotty's House, it's just going to be those little ones, Scott that we contracted for, basically, Scotty's House and "Are You Okay?", which is revenue loss, right?
Katie, we have this spreadsheet.
That's right. Cheryl has it.
It's labeled as...
Okay.
And you should have it in your package, the big house screen as well.
That's why I'm focusing on things that I know that we...
Ah, there we go.
Are you looking for the one that has the tab with changes D?
It's, isn't the earmark?
Kim, come up so we can hear you.
I've got the spreadsheet, so I'm good. Thank you. I haven't gotten to that page yet.
I think to somewhat reiterate what Commissioner Aldrich said, I think everyone wished this money would just be easier to spend, so.
I'm glad that it's enough money to where we're having to make sure we're doing it the right way.
That's true.
Okay, and then the, just talking about the, the two largest changes, unlimited potential and the Community Rec Center, the issue that we ran into there, into that was is facilities versus program? Okay. So Friends for Life and Scotty's House, that's program.
No, Scotty's House was security.
Okay, but it's not something that there'd be a responsibility for us, I don't know, maybe Ed would want to weigh in on this, but the distinction was facilities or something that was the one, I mean, some of this, the challenge for me in this is... Some of this, the, the challenge for me in this has been this is, this is one-time money and it ought to be used on a one-time basis, not to create an ongoing funding necessity. And I think we fit those with those two major parts of the six million in the approved changes. But I guess I'm, I, um, I'm a little concerned that we've got a lot more money than we have allocated. Maybe that's where we need to go is the discussions on what to do with the six million or actually the 7.4 million and where do we go from, where, where do we put that money?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I suspect that the BISD building is going to come in. When we get bids back, it's going to come in much more than nine million, which I think we've got plugged in there. The medical examiners certainly could come in at more than 24. I don't know yet, but until we start getting numbers back, I mean, I, I'm not sure where it needs to get plugged, but we've got the projects identified that I think will consume those as long as we can get it all done within the 2026 time period that we have to get it done.
What, can we use money for the build out of the old 360 first?
I think we're quicker, well, I mean, I guess we could. We're moving forward, I think, now trying to get that thing bid out to, you know, since we've got that court identified, it's already been approved.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could use ARPA money for it.
It would probably have to be in from the revenue loss portion, not the, I don't know whether it could come out of the, whatever we call grant side of.
Call it a grant. We call it grant.
Is that what, would it qualify, I mean to?
Depends on how you want to purchase it. That's the qualifying between revenue, revenue loss and grant. The biggest difference between the funds is how you want to go about purchasing those things. It's the whole bidding and, and.
We still have the same requirements regardless. The procurement requirements don't change on that. On any of the construction projects, I do worry about the estimates that we have are very preliminary. They are, I mean, we're, we're still putting squares on paper right now. We are not doing, we're starting to get into the structural elements and so forth, but we are very preliminary on any of those estimates. And with the, with the inflationary pressures, some of the constructions, some of those things are coming down, but other things are holding steady or very volatile at this point. Rationing or, or concrete allocations and so forth. It's, it's a kind of a, it's difficult to pin down a specific number. So I, I do urge caution on that as far as the court, courtroom at the courthouse. We are beginning discussions, but depending on what the, if we decide to use ARPA money for that, that may change our method of procurement for that. We may have to, we may have to stop where we're at and go back and, and refigure that process.
I was just wondering if we could use ARPA for that, since that's an expense we know we're going to have.
We, we potentially can, Commissioner. It just, it kind of depends on, you know, what funds, how many, how much of the funds you want to use? Do you want to use it for the design of that as well? Do you want to just use it on construction? It, it depends. We're, we're happy to, to do whatever you want. We just need to know at what point you want to start, what funds you want to, what funds you, in the process, which parts of that process do you want to spend ARPA funds on?
Have we spent any money on design yet?
Not yet, no, ma'am.
So.
Do we have an estimate idea, a guesstimate of what it would cost to, for design and build out of the old 360 first?
I'm, I'm grabbing out of the dark, but I'm going to guess a million and a half or so. And that is a pure wild estimate guess.
Yeah.
So the bidding process with federal funds is that different from the bidding process with local? That's what I thought.
Yes, sir.
It adds another level of.
Of the, of steps in procurement that we have to go through to spend those funds, clauses in the contracts, so forth and so on. So we have a, we have a current contract with an on-call architect to be able to do that.
In our previous presentation, we talked about prevailing wage. Do we have to do prevailing wage with federal money that we don't have to do with state or?
It's a requirement regardless. Yes, sir.
I think that's why we're looking at ME's office, because it's the biggest one to try to, we got a contract with it and hopefully we'll be able to.
And with that, with that piece of property, with, you know, for the court to maintain the most flexibility with options going forward with that, I am concerned with the site development and all with that, that the current allocation of funds would be able to encompass any advantages we may get for considering and designing those upfront, parking areas and traffic flow and stuff like that. If we can do some of that upfront, it may be economies that we enjoy instead of having to do it later on in the project.
Yeah, I come, I, I think kind of what you're talking about, Commissioner Berry, and it's kind of a concern for me is this, and I heard OPEB as a possibility, and I know that we have a actuarial significant unfunded liability there. But then the other part I heard too was this, when we can allocate whether money or not. So I, I know we, that 1.8 million that we bought the land for the ME's office, since we're using it for maybe something, that land for something more than just the ME's office, we decided to exclude that. Okay. And I, and I guess the ability to be able to, you know, what I'm looking for is, is I'm looking for a, as we get further down the line and, and hit the finish line on whether we, you know, pass the test with all of this money. And is, I'm looking for a, a category that we can have out there and say, okay, well, we've got this project and we've got that. And when, when you talked about the, you can't do it for one year, but you can say on the accounting of the revenue loss money. Because I mean, I think we're going to, with the 24 million projector, whatever, we're going to use all of the non-revenue replacement money. So we got a lot more flexibility with the other 22 million that's remaining there. I'm really kind of looking for, okay, where do we put, where, where are our contingencies? I guess is the word I'm looking for, for where we can put this money that qualifies to make sure that we're in compliance.
Commissioner Aldrich, realistically, I think our medical examiner's office and the BISD are probably going to cost more than we've allocated for it.
I, I certainly.
I mean, that's my gut feeling, not based on any numbers that I've seen, but.
Right. I believe that to be true, but I'd like to also have a, okay, in case we're pleasantly surprised.
Absolutely.
Relative to that, then, then what do we do?
Then the sanctuary and North Wing are both, you know, there's, there are enough bills that need to be done that could be used. If, if the ME's office comes in much cheaper than we think or the BISD, there are other needs here that I think would absorb all of that plus some. I think, I don't, I think we'll, that, that money will go, will get used, I believe. As long as we get plans drawn, construction done and all that, I think the money will be, I think we'll, it'll be taken up with what we're already discussing.
That's right. Well, I mean, we got a 7.42 million dollar fudge factor from what they've presented, what they've presented today. So do we, at this point, is it prudent for us to reallocate that? Or is it prudent for us to come up with contingencies for that 7.42 million?
Well, I know Fred Painet said when we went through the BISD building, he thought it was going to take about 15.
That was, that was the first numbers I was hearing.
Yeah, and so that pretty much takes care of that seven.
Yeah, well, we've got to get it, but we've got to get it done by. And we've got to have a certificate of occupancy by 12/31/26, right?
Right.
Because we're, we're not going to, we're not going to write the final payment for whatever it is we do with any of this stuff.
Yeah.
Until we get completion and a certificate of occupancy is completion, right? Okay.
So just as a reminder during the discussion, that 7.4 million does include the $930,400 from broadband. And then also the funds need to be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and expended by December 31st, 2026. So you do still have some time. And by the time we get to, closer to that 2024 deadline, we would still have the ability to go back and claim the payroll expenses. And I don't know if anyone recalls when we had the whiteboard and we were talking about kind of which bucket. I kind of kept trying to reiterate, we're going to leave this one up here for now, just in case. Because that is the way, I mean, whether it's $350, $350,000, 3.5 million, we should be able to make sure that each and every penny is used in a way that meets the program guidance. We certainly don't want to be feeling pressured to do that on December 30th of 2024. We'd like to know before then. But again, just a reminder, that's, that's kind of the parameters we're working within all the way around.
I think as the architectural plans get finished and we're out for bids and the contracts are awarded, we'll be locking those numbers in and then we'll know what we've actually got available for the projects.
Had, if, what was the eligibility category on that? It's not on this spreadsheet. I was just kind of curious, what was the eligibility category on that?
Which one?
For revenue, for wages.
So that is a government expense, that is, or government service. That is the definition given by the Treasury. And it is what I call a back end use of the revenue loss, revenue and replacement funds.
Okay.
So it technically, the expenditure category is under revenue replacement.
Okay, so do we have a, do we have a, okay, do we have a rough estimate of what's prudent or necessary for OPEB since it's, it's available? And do we have a estimate of what?
Well, no, I don't have an estimate on OPEB.
Okay.
No, I don't. But what we did was we went back and looked at our payroll expenditures from April to September of 2020, yeah, 2020. Let's see, is that right? Amount of payroll paid out in FY 2020 from April to September was 22,500,038. FICA for that same is 1.6 million. So there's your revenue replacement. We can, if it looks like our timeline is going to get too crunched, we can use that as our backup how we.
We got a bucket where we can throw the money in and be in compliance.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's, told me what I needed to know, thank you.
Okay, and if you hold me to those numbers, I'll retire.
I'm good.
I, I think that's, pretty much covers everything we had on the agenda today for. All right, Linda, thank y'all. I, I appreciate you coming up. We're going to keep moving forward and hopefully we're going to get some architectural drawings and, and bids out and then we can begin to lock numbers in. I know that's been a stress point for all of us. We want to make sure we're, we're moving forward or we may not hit that date that we've got to.
And one last thing, on this, on the spreadsheet we've got here on Are You Okay estimations, beyond fiscal year '25, we need to look at a $27,000 salary and benefits continuing.
Yeah, that's going to be.
We're going to have to swap that over because our, our, the use of ARPA money runs out at that point. Okay, yes.
All right.
So we just need to be able to absorb that.
Thank you all.
Good to see y'all again.
Thank y'all for coming up. And it's 10:59 and take the atmosphere adjourned.